The council will come to order. The council will come to order. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Please use your e-devices. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-devices. Please raise your hand if you need support. The quorum is now open. I will now call on those that have not recorded their votes. Alderwoman Gutierrez is present. Alderwoman Coleman. Alderwoman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderwoman Tabarez, not present. Alderman Secha Lopez. Alderman Secha Lopez is present. Alderperson Fuentes. Alderperson Fuentes is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Spisato, not present. Alderman Riley, not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, not present. Anyone else I missed? Alderman Moore is now present. Anyone else? All right, the voting is now closed. Oh, Alderwoman Harris is present. Got in at the last minute. Alderwoman Harris is now present. The voting is now closed.
Silverstein is virtual.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. There are 41 members, I believe, that are present, so we do have a quorum. There are a number of members that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stating in Rule 59, and they are as following. Alders Hopkins, Curtis, Rodriguez Sanchez, and Silverstein. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the quorum? It has been moved. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark those following alders participating remotely as present for the quorum call. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms, please restore order. I would respectfully ask that the body, as well as those who are participating today, to show a little bit more dignity in this moment, as we offer this moment for Dr. Nicholas Pierce from Apostolic Faith, who will provide today's invocation.
Let us pray. Eternal God our Father, we bow our heads before you today, thanksgiving and praise for your goodness and kindness. We come to you this day not out of perfunctory protocol, as the council commences its business, but out of an acute awareness of our need for your presence and your power in the city of Chicago and in this chamber in particular. Before we ask you for anything, we thank you for everything. We honor you and we acknowledge your sovereignty.
Yes, Lord.
The hearts of kings and queens, presidents and potentates are in your hand. The hearts of mayors and alderpersons, elected and appointed officials, are in your hands. And we confess that as leaders, we don't always get it right, and we need your forgiveness and the forgiveness of the people we serve. Leadership, oh God, is a sacred trust, not a platform to procure political power. And so we ask that you'd forgive us this day for those times when we have lost sight of the call to serve with humility and integrity. We confess, oh God, that we need you like fish need water. Because except the Lord keep the city, they who watch over it labor in vain. Bless all those, oh God, who call Chicago home, our babies and our seniors and those in between. God bless the food insecure and the unhoused. Bless the asylum seeker and the job seeker alike. We pray that you will bless power brokers and everyday people from the north side, from the south, from the east and from the west. And as the council convenes this morning, we ask your blessing upon its president, our mayor, and his family. Grant him wisdom. Grant him sound judgment. Give him, oh God, a praying and discerning spirit that is tuned to the frequency of your voice. Bless every public servant who is in the employ of the people of Chicago, every official, every alderperson representing the residents across every ward, every community, every neighborhood, and every block in this city. Grant them, oh God, the clarity and courage to do that which is right and pleasing in your sight. In a time when it seems like some politicians can be purchased, help them, God, to work collaboratively with one another, with clean hands and pure hearts, for the good of the city and its people. God, we invoke your presence in this place today, and we ask you to have your way in this chamber. Arrest agendas that are not like you. Change minds and open hearts. Work through these women and men today and every day for the good of your people. And God, if we've prayed a prayer too small, we ask that you'll do even more than we've asked for your glory and for the good of this city through Christ the Lord. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting dedicated to public comments. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker today is Casia Jones.
Please, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am a constituent of the Gage Park neighborhood. Since June, you decided to turn our park into a shelter. Our community is running lawless with illegal Venezuelans taking over our streets. We feel like prisoners in our own homes. As a taxpayer, we can't even enjoy our own park anymore. We are unable to take walks, our amazing programs have been removed, especially for the disabled children that live near this park. We worked hard to improve our park, our neighborhood, but because of your irresponsible move, this is not impossible. There are illegal cars are parking on their residence permit street. They are selling food without permit, causing traffic, yet no police reinforcement to help us. Guys are standing on the side of the building doing God knows what, riding their bicycles around the neighborhood and looking to break into our houses, garages, and cars. Smoking weed and drinking in the park in broad daylight. You guys threw us to the wolves, and now we have to deal with the trouble you brought to our neighborhood. Unlike the illegals, as a legal immigrant myself, I know what I had to do to enter your country. I was required to do a background check, vaccinations, pay an expensive fee, bring a letter from my previous job, shall I go on? Some might be good, but the others are here to cause trouble. For example, my neighbors have their car broke into, packages stolen from their front yards, and someone peed on my property. Yes. I'm requesting Alderman Vazquez, Mayor Johnson, and those who made this decision to walk our neighborhood and see what's happening there. You want to look good by helping them, yet we taxpayers are left behind. We are now being put in harms way because of the crimes they commit in our neighborhood. Your not-consequence policy tells them it's okay to commit these damn crimes. Now, what about the citizens and the legal immigrants who came before them? We're still waiting years for our own families to enter this country legally. It is frustrating to see our voice censored and feeling hopeless. Finally, we know the illegals are returning in the middle of the night, parking our residential permit area, acting as the shelter is a bed and breakfast. They need to leave now. We want our park back, and we demand that. It's not fair. You guys putting us in jeopardy. Kids cannot go outside. Two weeks ago, someone was peeing my yard. A lady grabbed a branch of a tree and took my package from Amazon. They are breaking into cars. 6:53 a.m., I have videos to prove, breaking into cars, and we cannot do nothing about it. Cops come, they see, and they go away, selling food all the time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Young Bay.
Honest, honest, honest.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm more so in celebration mode. See, I came down here for homelessness, you know, and tried to get housing, rental assistance, et cetera, and it seemed like y'all playing a political game with my family, and I'm a straight shooter. So you just got, I'm even, I can withstand the truth. So I can understand somebody say, no, we ain't giving y'all nothing. You know, I can respect that. Just tell me just like that, I ain't helping you get nothing. But y'all giving these migrants something. They keep on coming down here, the people pressing, hey, this what's going on in our neighborhood, this what's going on in our neighborhoods. And then the news don't even show what need to be shown. That's right, fake news. That's why you got more real news right here. You see? Because I've been doing investigations, because when them migrants first came to the 49th Ward, I gave them clothes. I gave them coats. You see? So I know what's going on. And I kept saying that for the longest. Well, I know you people don't know what's going on to this extent with this migrant and this immigration stuff. Because if y'all so much saying that Texas is doing this and Texas is doing that, why everybody calling this parked outside them shelters? That's employees, their license plates have Texas on there. You know? Give me that job, man. I do security. Why you giving this to somebody from Texas? You see? That's what's going on. Don't help me come out here. I told y'all. I had to let go last time because it's stuff involving my child. So me as a father, and I know that these places are against fathers. They're against husbands. I'm a merry man. You know what I'm saying? So I'm standing up for men. I'm standing up for these homeless shelters that y'all got our people in that got mold, that got rats, that got roaches, bed bugs, et cetera. And y'all putting them in nice hotels. You know? What's going on with that? How's our people? Y'all that bring Chicago home needed to fail. And I put for it to fail. Because if you want to bring the citizens of Chicago home, them people that's already in shelters, especially our veterans, they dying for us. They dying for us, especially our veterans. Put them in CHA property. How them? You ain't got to spend no diamonds as much as the millions and billions that been spent for these immigrants here, these migrants here, these asylum seekers here, which ultimately are illegal here. And there's people here that been going under the radar, they can't get a green card or work permit, and they've been here 20, 30 years. Seniors, pent handling on the street because they can't get nothing. I'm for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mrs. Lawrence.
What does it prosper a man or profits a man to gain the world and lose his soul? We gonna start off with scripture, because Mr. Johnson, you love quoting and thumping scriptures up there, and this is something I think is special for you, so I thought I would state that to you. We gonna talk about this executive order of yours that comes from 2023-16, where I'm not gonna read it all, because I don't have the time. But one thing I want to point out is how you made it clear that you're going to stick these people in our neighborhoods and that we have to just accept it. That's absolutely not, because we've talked about this since last year, when most of you older people who did not stand up with us and reject the sanctuary city. Now, I got a problem with that, and I spoke that on December 14th. So I think we need to cut down the staff of the older people here. How about that? Because you all are not all representing us. How about those who stood up and represented us? Then you stay in your offices. But the rest of you, goodbye. Because that's how we gonna see it when it's time to vote. That's where we going with that. Home Illinois 2021, that's when it came out, and bring Chicago home. Robbery! They both are for homeless causes that you all claim they're for. You and Prisker need to sync up, because both of you all are trying to pull the same number, which you claim is homeless. And I think you might recall that I said, I'm out here helping the homeless. I got a recording from a homeless that also said, y'all just don't care. You just don't care. There, hearing it straight from the homeless. Now, WOTC, Work Opportunity Tax Credit, 400-plus businesses, Hyatt, which is Prisker's company, all are hiring refugees and kicking all of y'all out. Now, how about that for news that's not being broadcast? See, I do my digging, I do my research, and all of you all will know, when I step up here to this mic, I bring the facts. I don't bring no opinions. So you all need to be careful of how you think you're treating us, because we coming for this. We bringing our city back. We removing all these illegals that's breaking our rules and laws, and we're fed up. So it needs to stop. Get your police out there and stop them breaking these laws. I got a lot more to say, but since my time is up, I think I picked on the most important essential matter. Get it cleaned up.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blake Moore.
Please, please, wait, 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 wait now. Wait now. I don't want y'all to steal my minutes. Even though those clocks are up here on me, they tick quietly and quickly. Illegal immigrants. Something is wrong with black people. You got all these black faces in high places, and you getting nothing. Who would let, knock, knock, knock on my door? I don't know you. Where you come from? Who's your mama, your daddy? Are you a criminal? Are you a pedophile? You're not getting in. You're not, your ass not getting in. Excuse me. I don't know nothing about you. The young lady say, a background check. Who are these people? Where do these people come from? Why would you bring them here? And why would you push them on the black community? The most force of all. We are in a caste system here, and at the bottom of this caste system, black people. I'm not talking about any of you. I'm talking about right here. And you got the audacity, you black, what I'm talking to, the audacity to bring in a illegal immigrant? Why would you do this? Sell out. Ain't your mama. House in. Yes, I say it. Because that's the way you act. Is something wrong here? Is something evil here? Is something corrupt here? What is it, Mr. Blake? All of these people here are Democrats. All of them are Democrats. Well, over in China, they got a one-party system. In Chicago, they do too. Yes, the most corrupt city in the United States. The most racist city in the United States. Who says that? Dr. King? Dr. King, what about, what is your criteria for corruption? Burt and all them get indicted, stealing, and just trouble here. And these young people are coming here, and they're looking at me, and they're looking at you. Now, you all making our opinion. Is something evil here? Something corrupt here? Something un-American here? You gonna bring in the illegals? When they weighing across the Rio Grande, they not weighing across to help black people. They are selfish people, and we, black people, gotta be selfish. Self-preservation is the first law of nature. And that preacher talking about loving everybody, black people love you. Love you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Joanna Galan.
Thank you, Mr. Blake Moore. We are moving on to our next speaker. Thank you. Please.
Hi to everyone. My name is Joanna Galan. I'm from Gage Park neighborhood. I'm here to say to all representatives, you are the one who put us in this issue, and we are the taxpayers. We are the ones who put you there. So the less you can do is do your job and bring us our safety back. And I have the right to say in Spanish as well, and I will. Estoy representando a la comunidad de Gage Park. Ustedes pusieron este problema en nuestras manos. Trajeron a los refugiados a nuestra comunidad. La mayoría de nosotros ni siquiera lo supo hasta que ya estaban ahí. Nosotros nos quejamos porque están haciendo de nuestras vidas un problema. Mis hijos no pueden salir al parque. Mis hijos ni siquiera pueden estar en mi propia yarda porque se quejan del olor de la marihuana, algo que antes no pasaba. Tal vez nuestros vecindarios no eran los mejores para vivir, pero ustedes lo han hecho peor. Nosotros los pusimos en donde están, y ustedes tienen la obligación de escucharnos. Y también se lo digo a los medios de comunicación. Si yo me quejo en español, espero que los medios de comunicación en español se hagan presente. Gracias, Univision, por estar presente y por hacer nuestra voz que se escuche. We want our safety back. It's not fair for our kids. It's not fair for our elders. It's not safe for our special kids' needs. You take the pillhouse from us, and our neighborhood is trash now. I dare you to walk by there at night, and I promise you, you will not like it, and you will not be back there. Les pido a nuestros representantes hispanohablantes. Están ahí por una razón. Los pusimos por una razón, porque confiamos en ustedes, y nos están fallando. The system is failing us. We are the ones who put you there, and we are the ones who can't take you by the power. That's all.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joseph Michael Chopin.
Hello, how are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joseph Chopin. I have just two things to say. I came to this city maybe 10 years ago, almost, and I came to produce a movie about Harold Washington. I went through CineSpace, I went through all the investors, I went through most of the people in the city council, even the mayors and the governors, and went to the dinners. And I realize that there is a, there's a, there's a, there's an issue with financing in this city. There's an issue with financing young entrepreneurs in this city. And I, young, young black entrepreneurs in this city, yeah. Dark-skinned black entrepreneurs with like curly hair and kinky hair. It's not, it's not light-skinned people or white people. It's always gonna be dark, dark, dark people with curly hair that have the issue. The only person on this council that I can recognize that helped me get to the mayor was Lamont Robinson. Now, I'm just gonna say, because I saw him in the corner here, so I just wanna make sure I put that out there, but I found myself in Africa, asking young people and entrepreneurs, how do you get money in America? How do you get money for your project in America without going to, through some grant program where somebody's stealing money, or somebody's taking something from somebody else, or somebody doesn't like somebody else, or somebody is trying to get the money for their community and their roads? So I think that the issue is that black people, that we're going to, we're going to keep coming here and complaining. We're going to, but now it's just about if you're going to listen. Are you really going to listen to us? Because there's a lot of young people who want money, a lot of young people who want opportunity, and they'll find it in other places. You can see them flying other places to different, and I'm imploring all young black people here today, Africa is your friend. You do, don't be afraid of Africa. Don't be afraid, if they don't give it to you here, get your business high up so that you can go out there and ask other people for money, because obviously, they don't have any money. For certain people, they do. For certain people, they do. For certain people, they have money, but for others, they do not. If you're black, if you have African descent, there's money for you, there's opportunities for you in other places. Sell here, live there. Sell here, live there. They don't, obviously, there's an issue. Sell here, live there. I wanted to, I'm saying it with all my heart, because there's, you know, it doesn't make any sense how excellence can come right in your face, and you say, you know what? We don't have money for that. It's sad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Dallas Trent. Dallas Trent. Our next speaker is Natasha Gray.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to start off by saying it's nice to see the young people here. All right, I have a heart, okay? I do have a heart, but what I do not appreciate is your issue with us and our need for self-preservation. Okay? This country has not made it, made clean with us as African Americans here. We should not give them a pass on what happens We should not give them a pass on what happens with us here, okay? You appointed a deputy mayor of immigration because we have a refugee-immigrant crisis. You've been having a crisis in the city. Where's our deputy mayor? A bunch of bullies sitting here, okay? A bunch of bullies sitting here. And Vasquez, you are an alderman. When have you stood with your people out there protesting? And I saw you two Saturdays ago at Priska Park at 4:30 PM. Why you find the strength to protest with them? Even after you give these people work permits, okay? You need to be honest with them. It is highly expensive to live here in Chicago. There will be an additional burden on the welfare system. We don't need that. How many schools did you all close? You got over 5,000 of their children in the schools. You didn't build any new schools? But you want us to focus on giving these teachers extra money? This is you guys' future. Okay? I don't see how, and I hate to play the race card, but the government has given us no other choice but to play the race card. And stop asking these people for anything. You're supposed to be demanding. Okay? But you know what? Once they done using you to lead us to slaughter, they gonna put you in the grinder next. That's how it always happens. And don't play on our emotions with Harold Washington, okay? Because he did do a great thing. But what you did in March 23? That was a slap in the face to all Americans, not just black Americans, okay? The reason why I bring us up is because we are in a national crisis, okay? But when anything is of scarcity, they take from us first. That's why we are in here so loud, screaming in your ear every week about our issues. Most of our time has already come, but we have to fight for our kids. Because they go to ones you gonna have to worry about in a minute.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Peters. Our next speaker is Ruben Castro.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is Ruben Castro. I am from the Gage Park neighborhood. A little bit about me. I am born and raised in Chicago. I am a CPS alumni from kindergarten all the way to senior in high school. I graduated at one of the highest dropout rates. At the time, it was 50% dropout rate. And I graduated with an accounting degree from Roosevelt University. And I also worked for large organizations, Fortune 500 companies. And I would say I'm an example of the state of Chicago. With that being said, I'm here to represent my community, Gage Park. Gage Park is going through a crisis right now. Ever since the migrant, and before I even say that too, I want to first by saying that Gage Park is not anti-immigrant. We have documented and undocumented people living in our neighborhoods. Ever since the migrants started to move in our fieldhouse, we started to see an increase in gang, in, in violence. And as a matter of fact, there was a gang violence because someone got killed on 55th and Western in front of the fieldhouse. And so a lot of people suspected that was gang-related. People do not feel safe even going to the park anymore. We have seen an increase in alcohol use, drug use, cars being broken into, and only that, but people are also breaking into garage doors. Someone seeking asylum doesn't do that. When my family came here, my family benefited from the Reagan administration from, during that timeframe. That type of immigrant, people came here to work, they came here to build, and they came here to respect. We, the people that are moving in here now are not respecting us. They're not respecting our neighborhood. They're littering everywhere. People don't feel safe. And I'm also very disappointed in Andre Vasquez and Carla Ramirez Rosa. For some weird reason, you all are getting media time, yet we literally had a press conference on Sunday talking about this. Yet, for some weird reason, the media chose to pick Andre Vasquez's side and not our side. And that's why we're here.
More real news here.
Just to let you know, as you all know, that the Democratic National Convention is gonna be happening in November.
Just for a second, sir. Hold on, hold on. Stop this time. Continue.
Just to let you know that the Democratic National Convention is gonna be here in November. And there is a growing number of people in Hispanic community that will not be voting the same way as they did before. If we do not, in August, thank you, in August, if we do not get issues resolved, people will not be voting how they used to before. And this is for everybody here. Everybody here. Everyone should be trembling right now because there is a movement happening that people will not be going the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public speaking portion of the meeting. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to honor some superstar champions from the Skinner West Elementary School. Let's get them a round of applause. I know, I know because they look taller than me, you think they're in high school. But these are seventh and eighth graders. And this is the first time in the history of Chicago that Skinner West has won the championship. And this weekend, they're gonna, this weekend, they're gonna play for the state championship. So let's cheer them on, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you. With further leave, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have two groups with me here today that I want to acknowledge. The lovely ladies of, ladies of virtue, and they're all about love and mentorship and supporting young African-American women. We acknowledge them today.
Please.
And I want to thank them for everything they do for young women and their mentorship. Also, today with us is Harold Washington Elementary School, under... And they're here with Preston for Peace. And if anybody knows that Aleah Preston was an officer who was shot down in the 8th Ward in front of her home. And her mother is here today, Deon Moon, who has led a mentorship program for young African-American children. And I'd like to say thank you for Preston for Peace and changing the lives of young people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Very... Of course. All right. Leave is still granted. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to just thank Alderman Harris for recognizing the ladies of virtue. They are special to me as well. They have done a lot of work in my ward on the south side of the city, taking care of young girls, showing them leadership training and what to look for in a career, doing service projects across the city of Chicago. I'm glad to see them recognized here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Dow. Thank you all again for being here. Chair recognizes, for more leave, Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this honor to ladies of virtue. I saw it firsthand.
Excuse me, Alderman, just for a second. Thank you. Alderman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I saw it firsthand. My niece, when my sister was alive, had her part of Ladies of Virtue, Diane Tompkins, and just turned out to be a fine lady. And I'm so proud of her for the work that Ladies of Virtue did with her. I also want to recognize, I want to recognize someone that I've known for many years, Debbie Gales Earl. Debbie, stand up, she's... Not only is she a part of this group, but you're talking about one of the best voices that come out of Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church. If you want somebody to sing, that's, that's who you want to pull. So love you all so much and thank you all so much for your service for our young ladies. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Just want to be recognized for the quorum this morning.
Please add Alderman Curtis to the quorum. Alderman Mosley wishes to be added to the quorum as well. Are there any other alders that wish to be recorded as president, part of the quorum? Very well. Thank you for all those acknowledgements from all of those alders. So thank you again. Alderman Mitchell, for our temporary suspension.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution acknowledging the students from Skinner West Elementary.
We, we just did leave for that. So this is just...
Just temporary suspension of the rules.
So again, what you are calling for, Alderman Mitchell, is you have moved to temporarily suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution that is recognizing, I believe, one of the most dynamic recognitions, and that's Women's History Month. Hearing no objections, so ordered, in the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolution. We will go straight to remarks. Are there any alders that wish to speak to the resolution recognizing the incredible contributions of women? The chair recognizes Alderman Moore, and then following, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. That's easy. For, for without a woman, none of us would be here, right? And so on.
Alderman Moore, I don't think your mic is on. Just a second. That's Alderman Moore, 17. Very good. Please.
Thank you.
Did you start over again? That first part was important.
Thank you, Mr. President. I say it was easy to stand up quick because for without a woman, none of us would be here. And first, always giving, first, always giving honor to the woman who I love so much, and that's my mother, who's in rehab right now. And I'm asking people to continue to pray for her as she overcome a surgery. But all the women that are just doing great things in the 17th Ward, I tell you, I recognize them in this Women History Month. Because when you get strong women to stand with you, you get children to stand with you, you get fathers to stand with you, and you begin to make a difference in your community. And those women in the 17th Ward especially are making a difference, as well as I'm sure other women are throughout this city of Chicago. So I just stand and rise in, in support of this resolution to honor the women of the 17th Ward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to the body and to the women who have joined us in the box today. As a, as the first Chinese-American to represent the, on the city council, the first woman to ever represent the 11th Ward of Chicago, and the first Asian-American woman on the council, it gives me great pride to stand here and acknowledge all of you who are here in the box and all of my colleagues, the women in this room who are helping to run this city, to every woman who works for the city of Chicago in the background, who are everyday unsung heroes, to our teachers, to all of the women in my life, my mother and many of my foremothers in the Chinese-American community, including the late Bernie Wong, who was the founder of the Chinese-American Service League, who contributed so much to the Asian-American community, but also to social services across this city, as Castle today is one of the largest social service agencies in the Midwestern region, serving much more than the Asian-American community. I think it's fitting on today, celebrating Women's History Month, that I get to sit next to all of these incredible women who every day are representing their own communities and making a difference and, and moving the needle every day. Right? And by the way, taking care of everybody else around us. To all the mothers that are here in the room as well, all of the double duties that we do, whether they are your birth children or not, because we know we've got grandmothers, aunties, blood or not, that are helping to raise children and to help keep our city safe. So together, thank you. Together, we will continue to do that. And I think my ask to everybody is that we honor those women, we recognize them, and to my two sons, please be grateful every day for the women in your life. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of recognizing this resolution and more specifically, recognizing all that women do to make society happen. And the strong women in our communities, not just the 15th Ward, but the entire city of Chicago. I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize one of the women who is leading the charge to connect veterans here in the city of Chicago. Many of you have known her through the Vet Connects Program that we've brought to you with the VA. But it is Ms. Elizabeth Soto who is standing behind me, a US Army veteran, first female superintendent of the Veterans Affairs Commission of Cook County. I think, Mr. President, one of the things that we can all agree on is that we have to show our mothers, our sisters, our wives, our neighbors, much more love than we do. I think that was one of the missed opportunities as we were coming out of COVID, the lack of support that we gave to women in particular with regards to a myriad of things. And I know, Mr. President, that our faith tells us that it is with our mothers that our hearts belong. So I want to take a moment, if I may, and just commend all of us to take a moment of silence if we can. My, for the, for the women who've been so integral in our lives that we have lost, who aren't able to see us where we are today. Personally, as a product of a divorced family who was basically raised by his grandmother, I could tell you how beneficial a strong woman can be to creating character in an individual. All of us, I'm sure, have that person in their lives who's no longer with us. And I would just like to take a moment to recognize them as well in this time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderman Bill Conway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd actually like to add another woman that we should recognize, something that is an inspiration to, to all of us, and someone who is a, a mentor and friend to me as her vice chair. And that is, of course, the first woman chair of the Finance Committee, and that is our friend and colleague, Pat Dow here. So let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair rec, the chair recognizes Alderman Lasbada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Glad to stand in support of this resolution because I, I will say, truly, whatever I know of strength and of courage and of tenacity and persistence, I know from the women in my life. And so I'm grateful for all of them. Some of them are in Congress now, some of them are commissioners, some of them are in this box. I will say, it's a really good look on this row up here. I, I remember this, this row from a couple of years ago, and it's a really good look. But I will share one quote that I thought of when I was sitting here that is, "It's too real to me too often," from Margaret Atwood, when she said, "Men are afraid that women will laugh at them. Women are afraid that men will kill them." women are afraid that men will kill them." And that's too true in this city every day, and it doesn't have to be. And we have the power to change that through our values and our work and our policies and our investments. And couldn't let the moment pass without saying that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Before we close out, are there any other alders that wish to speak to? The chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mayor, thank you very much. I also rise in support of this resolution. Alderman Conway stole a little bit of my thunder. We recognize history maker, Chair Person Dowell this morning. And I want to thank you for that, a great appointment. But I also want to recognize the 18 women in this chamber that really make our city proud. And I want to thank all of them because we need you. And I also just want to say thank you. And I think it's really in this moment, Mayor, we need to be able to recognize them and again, say thank you for their steadfastness to the residents of the city of Chicago. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman- Oh, you're not finished. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, bring the thunder then, Alderman.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize our city clerk and the hard work that she does for the residents of the city of Chicago. Thank you so very much. And Mayor, lastly, another appointment of yours in our corporate council. She has an extremely tough job at the city of Chicago, and I want to commend you again for that appointment and her job and diligence of the city of Chicago. Thank you so very, very much.
That's how you bring the thunder. Yes. Chair recognizes Alderwoman from the west side of the city of Chicago, Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stand in support of this resolution and want to make sure we highlight all the women who are working in our office, staff, who has to serve our constituents every day. But I also want to mention that for the women who are struggling, those women who have little children that are struggling just to provide for their families, our senior citizens who have paved the way for us today, including seniors from years ago, your grandparents, your great-grandparents, the reason why we are here today. I want to thank them for their service and what they have contributed to society. Mr. Mayor, we have, I want to thank all of the women who are fighting to keep their homes right now out there in 37th Ward. I hate to tell you, we're still struggling with the flood. And just yesterday, as I went to vote, I had one to come to me and says they couldn't get any help and they are forced to move out of the house because the mold. And we are still working on that issue. And I just want them to know that they are not forgotten about. If nothing, I have not forgotten about them, and I will not let anyone else in government forget about the residents of the 37th Ward who are still battling, suffering from the mold that has really exacerbated by now in the homes. And we are still looking for help in trying to for those residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Mr. President, I'd like to take this moment to, you know, say that I was very touched by the 15th Ward Alderman's comments. And I want to thank him for those comments because they touched me and made me think about my loved ones who are no longer with us here today. And I bet many of my colleagues here today also agree with that sentiment. I also want to recognize the chairwoman of the Black Caucus, Stephanie Coleman, for your leadership and the first Latina chair of the Latino Caucus, Rosanne Rodriguez Sanchez. Both of you, and a round of applause for her as well. Both of you leading with a lot of dignity, your respective caucuses, and embodying much of what this resolution is all about. Women who are impacting our lives at every level, but in this able-bodied, leading caucuses that are very influential and powerful. And your leadership is much recognized, both of you. So, just wanted to raise my voice in recognition of this resolution as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also rise in support of this resolution here on Women's History Month. I, in my time here in leadership, have not seen anybody work harder than the women that work in the city government, that work at our offices, that work in staff, and in the leadership here. And I want to thank all of you all for the leadership you all show us every day. I believe, if I'm correct, every caucus in city government is led by a woman. And so, I also want to thank Maria, our co-chair of Progressive Caucus, and everyone else for all the work that they do. And make sure that you all hold us accountable so that we write legislation. We're also showing that support, so it's not just about us giving speeches here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this? The chair recognizes Alder Manah Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to stand in recognition of this resolution and also to those who are in the box today for your work to uplift women every day, especially those who are really suffering in silence because of domestic and gender-based violence. I thank you. And to those who are suffering in silence right now, we see you. We love you, and you are valued. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. As a proud woman, I am eternally grateful to the trailblazing women of the past to set the course for equality for the people of all genders. I would like to thank my own mother for setting an example of self-confidence and pride, and I hope that I am able to set a similar example for my daughters. Serving on the City Council is a singular honor, and I am proud that our council is more diverse and more representative of the city of Chicago than ever before. Women's rights are under attack across the nation, which is why it is so important for us to stand up and recognize the rights of women to pick their own careers, to decide their own healthcare, and to have control over their own bodies. We also need to recognize that women's rights are being violated around the world. The international community may not speak out about the Israeli women who were sexually assaulted on October 7th, but I won't remain silent while Jewish women or any women are subject to rape and mutilation. The impact of conflict falls disproportionately on women and children. Together, let us send a clear message that the international community cannot stand idly by while women are deprived of their basic rights and freedoms. We need to speak out for women everywhere, be they Israeli hostages in Gaza, Palestinian women oppressed by Hamas, refugees in Sudan, or civilians in Ukraine. I am honoring Women's History Month. In honoring Women's History Month, let us not only celebrate the achievements of the past, but also recommit ourselves to the ongoing struggle for gender equality and justice. Together, we can build a future where all women are treated with the respect and dignity they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing no hands, I do would respectfully ask that you all not shout out during this meeting, please. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Ed Arms. So, thank you to this body for acknowledging the first black chairwoman in the history of the city of Chicago and the first black woman to be corporate council, black women. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing them. We see you. There are other individuals that we also see that are here today that are in the box. Thank you to Amanda and Brenda Charmili. Hope I got that right. Said close enough. Stephanie Love Patterson, Cheryl Miller, Mary Rosales, Joyce Hervantes, Valencia Ahmed. Thank you to all the women who are in the box today. Please acknowledge them and recognize them and give them a nice round of applause. Thank you. You may be seated. Just a few more words here. Women have been on the front lines with some of the biggest fights in the history of the world, whether it's seeking civil rights, gender equality, labor rights, reproductive rights, and countless other causes. Women have been on the front line, challenging this country to live up to its idea. It's why I'm very proud to stand with you all today as we celebrate the resilience, leadership, and accomplishments and the enduring impact that women in the past, in the present, and the future have played on this tremendous city. I will quote one woman. People often ask, in many cases, how do we stand the test of times? And this very famous quote, when people asked this powerful woman how she felt about the world, and she said so eloquently. She said that great minds discuss ideas, that average minds discuss events, and then there are simple minds that discuss people. That was the first lady of the world, Eleanor Roosevelt. And so, today, our opportunity is to discuss ideas, and let's not stand in the way of the power that women bring to the discord, as well as to the legislative efforts. But let's not be small-minded. Let's be like women. Thank you all very much. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, sole order. Alderman Mitchell?
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, the chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Mr. President, I just want to be recorded as present on today's quorum roll call.
We will please add Alderman Riley to the quorum roll call. Okay, if it's okay, I'm going to offer leave to Alderwoman Lee to give a recognition. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm introducing a resolution celebrating the contributions of Clarity Partners on their 20th anniversary of their founding. Their founders, David Namkung and Rodney Zek, are here with us today in the gallery, if you wouldn't mind standing. Clarity Partners has been in business, thank you, for 20 years and also has served this city in many, many ways. They have been acknowledged seven times by the Chicago Tribune as a top workplace and thrice named the best place to work by Crane Chicago Business and honored twice as a Fast 50 recipient of Crane's and acknowledged seven times as an INC. 5000 recipient for its rapid growth as one of America's fastest-growing companies right here in Chicago. So, I want to acknowledge their contributions to the city of Chicago, to being a great employer and continuing to invest in our city. And to David, as an Asian-American leader, I look up to you. I appreciate all the support you've given to our community, to investing in leadership and investing in young people and having the vision to see not just what's important here for our Asian-American community, but beyond. So, thank you very much and congratulations on this momentous occasion.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, Alderwoman Lee. There was a motion to return to the regular order of business. Hearing, the chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
I would be remiss if I didn't say some kind words about Clarity Partners as well, an IT firm that's headquartered in Chicago and was given an opportunity 20 years ago. And here they are, one of the fastest-growing companies in the city. This is exactly how the Minority Business Enterprise Program is supposed to work, where you give a small company an opportunity, and then now they're one of the larger employers in the IT space in the city of Chicago. So, congratulations on 20 years and cheers to another 20 years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much. Alderman Lamont Robinson also wishes to speak. Chair recognizes him.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I rise to honor the late Commissioner Clarence Wood, who headed the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. The Commissioner was very diligent in making sure that he brought together all communities in the city of Chicago. And one particular community, the LGBTQ+ community, he protected that community with his role as the Chicago Commission on Human Relations. He also was the founding member of the Coalition for African-American leaders. And again, I just want this body to take a moment to recognize the late Commissioner for the work that he did for the residents of the city of Chicago. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Are there any other alders that wish to speak before we return to the regular order of business? Seeing no other hands, there's been a motion to return to the regular order of business. Hearing no objections, sole order. Communications.
Communications from the Honorable Mayor to the Honorable City Council of City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner on Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt bonds to the development of 52 units of affordable housing. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner on Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of TIF funds for the Ogden Wasna A2 Residential Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner on Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for Home Keep LLC to acquire three buildings for affordable housing purposes. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide TIF funds for improvements at Park 598. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an amended redevelopment agreement with NP Avenue OLLC, providing TIF funds for improvements at Commerce Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner on Housing, Commissioner on Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan restructuring agreement with Warren Ashland LLP. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on the budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development Technology Innovation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of service agreements with Data Made LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on contracting oversight and equity. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a renewed Class 6 B tax incentive for a property located at 4900 to 4940 West Grand Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital and technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a negotiated sale of city-owned property located at 4741 South Indiana Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of renewed lease agreement with Chicago Children's Advocacy Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding the licensing operation of shared scooter businesses. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on license and consumer protection. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Superintendent of Police and Corporate Counsel, I transmit here with an ordinance regarding DNC-related procedures. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fees for environmental cleanup costs at 2420 North Sacramento Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a right-of-way acquisition for the 47 Ashton Court Improvement Section 2 project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Nick Lucius, the Chief Information Officer. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Lynn Headspit as Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Marlene Hopkins as the Commissioner of Buildings. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Michael Edie as member of the Chicago Transit Board for a term effective immediately and expiring September 1st, 2028, to succeed Johnny L. Miller, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Chicago Park District Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council of the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Chicago Board of Education, notification of extension of a capital improvement tax levy for fiscal year 2024. Officer of Office of Inspector General's Advisory Concerning City's Complaint-Based Approach of Providing Services. Office of Inspector General's Follow-Up to Audit Report Concerning Department of Family Support Services Strategic Contracting and Civilian Office of Police Accountability Annual Year 2023 Report. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 15, 2024, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on March 20, 24, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council of City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 21, 2024, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on March 20, 24, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council of City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassification of Particular Areas, which are referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims Against the City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by the Commission of Chicago Landmarks for the designation of Apollo's 202875 West Serra Mac Road as a Chicago Landmark, which refer to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Correction, December 13, 2023, City Council Journal Proceedings, which refer to the Committee on Committee and Roles. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Very well. Thank you very much. We are now moving to our committee reports. And to start our committee reports, the chair recognizes Finance Chairperson Dow.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on March 18, 2024. The following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the execution of a loan restructuring agreement with Halsted Limited Partnership for the property at 3600 through 3616 North Halsted in the 44th Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move the passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Thank you very much. Again, members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device and raise your hand if you have any issues. The voting is now open. All right, I will now call on those who have not submitted their votes. We'll do remote. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins, you there?
Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hopkins, hold aye.
All right, Alderman Hopkins is a yes, an aye. Alderwoman Gutierrez. Alderwoman Gutierrez is a yes. Alderman David Moore. Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Not in chambers. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, virtual?
Aye.
All right, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. And Alderwoman Silverstein.
Aye.
All right, Alderwoman Silverstein is an aye. Has all voted that is wished. All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 48 yays, zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell, a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is a substitute ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance to the Earl School LLC for the Charles Earl Apartments Project at 1711 West 61st Street in the 15th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first, most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, sole order.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning the execution of a loan restructuring agreement with Hollywood House Limited Partnership for the property located at 5700 North Sheridan Road in the 48th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Bessemer Park at 8930 South Muskegon Avenue in the 7th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Item number five is an ordinance concerning the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at McWayne Park at 2901 South Poplar Avenue in the 11th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Item number six is an ordinance concerning the First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the provision of tax increment financing funds for the construction of Park 599 at 1623 West Edgewater Avenue in the 40th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Item number seven is an ordinance concerning an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Portage Park Capital LLC for the provision of tax increment financing funds for the construction of the project and related improvements at 3657 North Central Avenue in the 30th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Item number eight is a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Chicago Cooperative for the provision of tax increment financing funds for the rehabilitation of the building and related improvements at 4620 North Broadway in the 46th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Mr. President, I take a moment. I just want to say happy birthday to our colleague Angela Clay, since we're talking about the 46th Ward.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Item number nine and 10 consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago and denials of payments of various small claims against the city of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, sole order.
Item number 11 is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of February 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 12 is a proposed order authorizing charitable solicitation of the public way tag day permit for miserecordia citywide on April 24, 26, and April 27, 2024. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 13A, I'm sorry. Item number 13A is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of the estate of Rashad McIntosh, deceased, by Cynthia Lane Administrator versus the City of Chicago in the amount of $2.25 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Conway, Alderman Quinn, O'Shea, Spazado, Riley, Nugent, and Cardona, who all wish to be recorded as voting no.
The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
I recognize the no as well, please.
Okay, please. All right, there's been a, there's a motion for a roll call vote.
Please.
Madam Clerk.
Okay. There is a roll call vote. The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please all submit your vote. All right, I will now take a voice vote for those who have not voted. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman David Moore. Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Cardona, not present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. And Alderwoman Silverstein.
No.
Silverstein is a no. All right, the voting is now closed.
There are 33 yays, 15 nays. This motion passes.
Item number 13B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Rodriguez versus Guevara et al. in the amount of $5.5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion, with the exception of Alderman Curtis and Cardona, who wish to be recorded as voting no.
Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Mr. President, I recognize the no as well.
The chair, there's a motion for a roll call. Madam Clerk.
All right, the voting is now open. The voting is now open. For all those, please submit on your e-device. All right, I will now call for those who have not voted. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Cardona is not present. Alderwoman Silverstein, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderwoman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderwoman Silverstein is a yes. All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 36 yays, 12 nays. This motion carries. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Item number 13C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Nathan Jones, a minor, by his guardian and mother, Erica Boyd, versus City of Chicago et al. in the amount of $45 million. $20 million to be paid by the city and $25 million to be paid by the city's insurance. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, sole order.
Mr. President, this concludes my report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you very much. For our Committee on Budget and Government Operations, the chair recognizes Chairperson Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council reported for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on March 20. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is the appointment of Julie Hernandez Tomlin as the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management. She's joined us in the box, and if anyone has any comments, I reserve the right to close.
Thank you. The appointment of Ms. Hernandez Tomlin. Are there any alders that wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for this nomination as well, and to the infinite wisdom of the committee for unanimously supporting a great Chicagoan, someone who I'm proud to have known for some time now, who's worked for our great city throughout your career, and your excellence in government services is absolutely to be applauded. I thank you for stepping up and stepping in when it was called upon, and I'm looking forward to your continued leadership of our great city. We need people like you at all levels of government, and I'm glad we have you in this position. So congratulations to you, Julie, your family. It was great to meet your sister in the back just recently. And, Mr. President, congratulations on this wonderful appointment. Happy to support you, Julie, in this endeavor.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment, Commissioner. Like I said in committee, I think I pretty much said it all. You got it right on this one, Mr. President. It's great that you're putting a hard charge on Chicagoan that always strives to get it right and to make it better, make our city better. Terrific appointment. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely stand in support of this appointment. As I said in committee, it's when we talk about diversity and equity and people looking like what Chicago's supposed to look like, but also people who are supposed to make sure that they are, you know, giving back in equity, making sure that they are reaching out to the community. Julie Hernandez has been that person before she was in a high position, and she loved Chicago, and she serves Chicago as a whole well. I've seen that firsthand, and that's a part of who their family are. She's sitting there with my friend, her husband. her husband, Andy Tomlin, who, who I appreciate for the service that he has given, um, to this city. And so I, I, I stand in support of you, and I look forward to working closely with you. And as always, you know, anything I need to fight for you, I mean, fight for you with in terms of getting any resources to help you do your job, you know, I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this nomination. Julie and her family have been longtime friends of mine, North West Siders. Actually, Julie's, uh, quite a bit younger than me, but she didn't grow up too far away from where I grew up. So her father's a longtime friend. Her husband used to be my chief of staff. So wonderful gal, wonderful family. Glad you brought her back. Great move, Mr. President. I one hundred percent support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this appointment. Uh, March is Women's History Month. As we mentioned today, where we stand in honor, strong and smart women. Um, Commissioner Hernandez, you are exactly that. Um, you are a great example and inspiration to many women, predominantly Chicago women, and, uh, I want to thank you for your service to this city. Mr. President, uh, once again, I want to commend you on an excellent appointment, and, uh, we are so proud to see Chicago, people in Chicago, from Chicago, uh, be awarded with a leadership positions, positions. So thank you once again.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gilbert Villegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I also, uh, stand to support this appointment. Um, glad to see Ms. Hernandez Tomlin back in city government where she belongs. Uh, you know, oftentimes, uh, when appointments are made, they're, they're looked at as the expert, looked at the ex-subject matter expert in that area. And quite frankly, um, Julia Hernandez Tomlin is, is an operator. She understands how to get things done, and we, I've always had a pleasure of working with her closely and looking forward to supporting what you do at Two FM. So welcome back and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Derek G. Curtis.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, Mr. President. Derek G. Curtis. I'll too, I also rise to, um, commend you on, on this appointment. Uh, Julia, she, she's been great, uh, with the City of Chicago, uh, done a lot of work, uh, with us before she left. Great job, and, uh, I'm glad, we're glad to have you back. Uh, we also see our distinguished, uh, uh, Water Department Commissioner, which you also, uh, brought back, Mr. Mayor. He knows the work that she's done, worked with him together, and she's supporting him, her today. And, uh, again, congratulations and welcome back home. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to commend you on this appointment. Uh, Julie, we missed you, and we're really glad to see you back. Um, you know, a lot of times folks get appointed, and there are concerns about how long it might take for somebody to get an understanding of how government needs to move, how to get things done. Since the day, the first day I've been in office where we've had to call you for help, the execution has been top-notch. It's really great to see a woman in leadership and a Latina at that, and I want to thank you for that work. Um, when we think about all the things we're going to have to talk about, about our fleets and how we're supporting all the electrification of vehicles and how we look at our buildings, there's a lot of work to be done, and I am more than confident that in your leadership, we're going to move this city forward. So I want to thank you so much, um, for everything, and thank you again, Mr. President, for a great, great appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this appointment. Uh, commend you on this appointment. This is a great appointment. Speaking of, um, you know, honoring women today, uh, just thinking about Julie's grandmother. She come from a great lineage. Uh, her grandmother was the first Latina County Commissioner in Cook County. Uh, and she's also come from a, a long line of public servants in the City of Chicago. Her father right there, Mr. Hernandez, used to work for the planning department. Uh, Julie been working for the city from, uh, as a youngster, working her way up in the ranks and serving many commissioners and helping people to get things done. So it's only fitting, and I want to thank her for taking the opportunity to come back, uh, to help us to get things done here in the City of Chicago. And I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge her husband, who was a go-to guy, get things done, uh, guy in the City of Chicago. So, I mean, when you get Julie, Mr. Mayor, you get a whole generation, several generations of people who can help her and support her, uh, with everything that she does. So congratulations on this appointment.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Ray Lopez.
Thank you again, Mr. President, and again, good morning, members of the City Council. Uh, I was hoping to be the first to bring up the original Commissioner, but I see the Vice Mayor beat me to it. But I know that she'd be very proud to see where you are again, and you have a strong ethic that runs deep in your family, which are all a testament to that, uh, even when they marry in. Um, but I want to say this, that there are many challenges. You know this, and I think, Mr. President, you picked someone who we can all agree is up to that task of setting order, uh, to the chaos of dealing with an aging infrastructure that was neglected, um, and put off and deferred. You know, the time has come, and I think that you will execute it beautifully, because I know your family will make sure that you have the network to do so, and that you have so many individuals who have worked with you over decades, um, to make that happen. So I wish you all the best. I'll keep it short. I gave you no speech in budget because I wanted you to get through, so you're not escaping today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before Alder, our Chair closes. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this appointment? Seeing other hands? Um, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, uh, Commissioner, uh, welcome back. Uh, you still got a few minutes if you choose not to, uh, turn around because the door will, will close. But I, as I told you before, there are no unimportant parts of this city, no unimportant departments in this city and Fleeting Facilities Management, while sometimes it's all often overlooked. Imagine us, uh, moving with our lights, moving with our vehicles, getting the work done in this city. So in fact, you're one of the pieces of the glue that holds us all together. So, um, as has been stated earlier, you have a lot of, uh, meaningful work in front of you, uh, dealing with our, our fleets, dealing with our facilities, the electrification, uh, dealing with a lot of different, uh, issues and challenges that we face here in our city. But again, uh, welcome back, and we commend you on the work that you have done, and we look forward to greater work from you in the future. And with that, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if I could have a moment to suspend the rules for a very important announcement today.
Okay, uh, uh, sure, I believe that's in order. It's a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you very much.
This ought to be good.
It's really good. It's even better than Angela Clay's birthday. There's a, there's a reason Deborah Silverstein is not here today, and I don't know if my colleagues know about it, but she became a grandma for the first time.
Oh, yes. Hey, congratulations.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that Deborah's a grandma now.
Is there a motion to return back to the regular order of business? There's a motion to return back to the order. There's been, it's all in favor, saying a vouch and aye. All right, back to the regular order of business. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, that is a birthday, so, uh, we'll work with that. Item number two is a communication recommended proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year twenty twenty-four amendment within Fund nine-two-five. Make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Uh, item number three is an amendment of the municipal code, chapter two dash seventy-four, adding section two dash seven-four dash zero-seven-five to establish hiring preferences for residents of socio-economically disadvantaged areas. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number four is an amendment of the municipal code, chapter seven dash two-eight, adding section seven dash two-eight four-four-five to establish a reward program for information leading to conviction of finding of liability for illegal dumping. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number five is an amendment to the municipal code for section two dash one-one-two dash zero-one-zero to require City Council advice and consent for the appointment of the Department of Public Health Commissioner. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number six, uh, will be held in committee. Uh, item, item number seven is a transfer of funds within the fourth ward wage and automatic allowance expense account for account year twenty twenty-four. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number eight is a transfer of funds within the twenty-sixth ward wage allowance and automatic expense account for year twenty twenty-four. I make the same objection if there is no.
Hearing none.
No, I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Uh, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For Committee on Aviation, our next committee, the Chair recognizes Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Chicago City Council, reporting for your Committee on Aviation, which held a meeting on Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one, ordinance two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-zero-seven-eight-six-one. This ordinance authorizes the execution of a technical service agreement with National Renewable Energy Laboratory. Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two. Substitute ordinance. Two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-zero-two-two-one-two. This ordinance approves the acquisition of state-owned property located at fifty-four-hundred West Sixty-third Street, or used by Chicago Midway International Airport. Mr. President, I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Committee on Committees and Rules. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules, which met Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve P.M. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Items number one through three are corrections of the City Council Journal, Journal of Proceedings of November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and November fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Items one, two, three received a due pass recommendation. Mr. President, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a recommendation that ordinance two-zero-two-four zero-zero-zero-seven-eight-three-eight issuance of the general obligations and/or sales tax to securitization corporation bonds for economic development and affordable housing programs be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. I move approval of the recommendation that item four be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee of Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Our next committee on economic capital and tech- technology development, Chair recognizes Chairman Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Committee, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Thursday, March fourteenth. The Committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through eleven on the report are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas introduced by Mayor Johnson during the February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting. The following individuals are being considered for, before the Committee. Reappointment of Helen R. Bailey to SSA number twenty-seven, appointment of Jennifer Hesser to SSA number seventy-six, reappointment of Rick Perez to SSA number twenty-five, appointment of Robert L. Taylor to SSA number forty-three, appointments of Angelica M. Marks, James A. Nurse, Mary J. Rogal, George W. Rumsey, Nancy H. Stanek, Eric L. Thompson, and George W. Robinett the Third to SSA numbers sixty-one dash twenty-twenty-three. I move for passage of these appointments and reappointments by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item twelve on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class C tax incentive for the property at twelve-fifty South Kilborn Avenue in the twenty-fourth ward, introduced by Mayor Johnson during the February twenty-twenty-one, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item thirteen on the agenda is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a Class L tax incentive for property at fifteen-sixty-five to fifteen-eighty-nine North Milwaukee Avenue in the first ward, introduced by Mayor Johnson during the February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fourteen on the agenda was a direct, uh, introduction calling for support of the Affordable Connectivity Program and urges Congress to take immediate action to approve funding that will allow the Federal Communications Commission to continue providing this much-needed assistance to ensure eligible low-income households continue access to high-speed internet necessary for work, education, healthcare, and participation in our mark, modern society. Congress needs to act by March twenty-second or risk disconnecting those that can least afford to be disconnected. I move for passage of this item by the same roll call vote on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next committee on ed- is Committee on Education and Child Development. The Chair recognizes Chairperson Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Education and Child Development, which held a meeting on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one is the appointment of Katia Nukez to the Board of Trustees of the Community College District five-oh-eight, eight-two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-seven-five-eight-two, the appointment of Marshal Elijah Hutch Senior to the Board of Trustees of Community College District number five-oh-eight, eight-two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-zero-seven-eight-five-three, the appointment of Darlene Oliver Hightower to the Board of Trustees of the Community College District number five-oh-eight, eight-two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-seven-eight-five-five, and the appointment of Oscar Sanchez to the Board of Trustees to the Community College District five-oh-eight, eight-two-zero-two-four dash zero-zero-seven-eight-five-six. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call on the Committee of Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chair recognizes Chairperson Sigil Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of five ordinances. These include various land sales, redevelopment agreement, and a municipal code amendment. Item number one, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seventy-eight-eight-one, amendment of municipal code section two dash forty-four dash one-thirty-five by extending expiration date for demolition surcharge to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, affecting the first, the twenty-fifth, the twenty-sixth, and the thirty-fifth wards. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The following items from the Department of Planning and Development are grouped together for convenience. Item number two is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seventy-nine-twelve redevelopment agreement with K-Town BCP LLC, including conditional purchase of eleven vacant city parcels from forty-seven oh-four to forty-seven thirty-eight West Fifth Avenue, subject to remediation for expansion of parking lot to service developers' new facility at forty-six forty-six West Fifth Avenue in the twenty-fourth ward. Item number three, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seventy-eight-eight-seven, negotiated sale of vacant city-owned property as is at thirty, uh, three-five-five North Ketsi Street to thirty-five, three-forty-five Art Gallery LLC in the twenty-seventh ward. Item number four, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seventy-eight four, uh, ninety-four, sale of city-owned property at sixty-two twenty-two South Walcott Avenue to J. to J. Artemio Muñoz Busio and Maria del Carmen Muñoz under adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program in the sixteenth ward. Item five, this is S., uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty-four, dash, zero, 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 seventy-nine, oh, seven, passed as a substitute in committee for the sale of city-owned parcel as is to various applicants under the Chi Block Builder Platform at five forty-three North Long Avenue, forty-nine oh seven West Huron Street, ten seven four four South Eggleston Avenue, eleven seven oh five South Sangamon Street, eighty-seven thirty-nine South Morgan Street, and eighty-six sixteen South Carpentering Street. I've moved passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Finally, the Department of Housing presented their twenty twenty-three Q-three and Q-four report for the five-year housing plan to the Committee. No, no votes were taken for these reports. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Our next Committee, Committee on License and Consumer Protection, for convenience, to be want, we're going to recognize our Vice Chair, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. I am reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to consider six ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the twenty-third, thirty-seventh, thirty-eighth, thirty-ninth, forty-fourth, and fiftieth wards. The Committee has recommended passage of each of these items. Oh, two zero, two, four, dash, zero, 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 seven, five, five, nine, and others ending seven, six, five, four, seven, six, six, four, seven, six, nine, three, seven, seven, one, one, and seven, eight, one, nine. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Oh, two zero, two, four, dash, zero, 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 seven, eight, six, zero, a substitute ordinance amending section four, dash, six, zero, dash, seven, three, of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding lakefront, lakefront venue liquor licenses. I move passage of this item in the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Oh, two zero, two, four, dash, zero, 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 seven, eight, seven, four, a substitute ordinance to amend section four, dash, three, eight, eight, of the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding the Wrigley Field adjacent area. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next Committee, Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, that the Chair recognizes Chairperson Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Before the Committee, there were one hundred and sixty-seven routine items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. For Committee on Police and Fire, the Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which a meeting was held March eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. There were three items before the Committee, which the Committee recommends due passage. The appointment of Dwayne DeVries to the, uh, Chicago Emergency Telephone Systems Board, the reappointment of Mar, Mary Sheridan to the Chicago Tele, um, Emergency Telephone System Board, and the appointment of Adrian Johnson to District Council for the First Police District. Mr. President, if there's no objections, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable item in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion for reconsideration.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes, concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. For the Committee on Public, for the Pip, for the Committee on Public Safety, for also for convenience, Chair recognizes the Vice Chair, Vice Chair Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, requesting for your Committee, I'm sorry, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held a meeting on Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four at City Hall. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Item one, approval of the Rule forty-five report for December, two thousand twenty-three, and item two, um, A two zero, two, four, dash, zero, 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 seven, three, one, one, appointment of Jose Tirado as Executive Director of the Office of Emergency Management Communications. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to support this appointment of, uh, Mr. Jose Tirado, um, as the Executive Director at the Office of Emergency Management. Jose and I go back a long way, and it's glad to see that someone from Humble Park and Humble Beginnings, uh, is sitting in this, uh, important chair, uh, which ultimately is responsible for ensuring that the city's emergency plan is in place. Someone with a decorated background with the Chicago Police Department, uh, but more importantly, someone who's from the neighborhood, that understands, uh, is, is compassionate. So very excited to see him in this position. I'm glad that Liz's better half is allowing him to serve in this capacity, uh, as, um, as, uh, Mr. Tirado, uh, left the job that he loved, um, and now is in a position that, uh, he's, uh, really likes a lot, um, instead of, uh, loving. But we're, we're very, we're very supportive of him and looking forward to, uh, having Mr. Tirado, uh, in this position as we, uh, have the DNC here in Chicago, uh, and also with the, with the migrant mission. So great appointment, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Mr. President, and this position demands much of the person in this role, given the recent challenges our great city has had, and the complex and nuanced nature, uh, the way in which you need to collaborate, the way in which you need to be steadfast in your position, call balls and strikes as you see them. This position really requires someone with a lot of integrity and ability to get the job done, and confidence from our legislative body, from the fifth floor, and the citizens of the city. And I can't think of a better person than Jose Tirado to fill this position. Uh, again, Mr. President, I'm very, um, happy with your appointment, um, and I think our city will be a safer and better place through this employment, uh, appointment. Mr. Tirado, you have much ahead of you. Uh, I know you are available twenty-four, seven, I'm sorry, uh, but that's what we're going to need from this great gentleman, but I know, uh, that you have it in you. So once again, congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Jose had a very distinguished career with the Chicago Police Department. Um, you're coming in, you have a wonderful team around you, and as has been stated here, what an important role you have. Um, couldn't think of a better choice, Mr. President. Best of luck.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, me and Jose go back many years, he was my commander at the Police Department, and we know what this job demands, and the one thing I took away from my time with him is his work ethic. You know, hardly worked every single day for not only the, the rate and file of the Police Department, but the residents of the fourth district, and he'll do the same thing for the residents of the city of Chicago. So great appointment, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm just going to have to one-up my colleague again, like I did the other day. Jose, as you know, you were Peter Chico's commander, but you are my constituent, so he is my, I am his Alderman, Mr. President. I didn't know if you were aware of that. Uh, um, Mr. President, great appointment. I, I don't mean to be critical here, I don't know what took you so long. I didn't realize, uh, Jose's been there for a year, so we're glad it finally happened. Uh, we got a man stepping right in with a lot of experience, has an unbelievable resume, his service to the city as a, as a police officer and to our country as a, as a military person, so I just want to say, great appointment, I look forward to working with you, and I, I know you're up to the task, I know it's going to be a demanding job, and we got a lot ahead of us, especially in August, so, uh, um, I know you're the right man for the job, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Gee.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Gee.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Uh, I too rise, Mr. President, uh, also another great appointment. Um, our Department of, uh, Emergency Management is probably the most important, uh, department in the city of Chicago. OEMC is the eyes and ears of the city of Chicago to make sure that we're safe. I feel that, uh, Jose, and, uh, we don't take that lightly because we're going to call you Commissioner and Director, but Jose is very personal, uh, and, uh, you the best person, I feel, uh, for this job, uh, you up for the task, and congratulations, you deserve it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise to support this appointment. Um, I really think that, uh, as the former commander of the fourth district, who drove from another side of the universe every day, never missed a beat, never missed a beat, always present. I sometimes say, you used to have a cop back there in that office, huh? You used to sleep here all night, your poor wife don't even know what you look like now. But, um, I think he'll be a great addition, uh, and, uh, is wonderful, responsive, caring, concerned, so I think this is a fabulous addition to our City Council personnel that we all have to work with. So today, I thank you for this wonderful appointment, and I can't wait to work with you again.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I commend you on this, uh, as today another great, uh, appointment. Um, this is real easy for me. Uh, one of the things I tell people, you want people, yes, who are servants, but you also want people who are compassionate and care about people, and then thirdly, who understands operations. There is nothing more important than having all three of those combinations, because there are some people who know how to operate, but they don't know how to handle people. There are people who know how to operate, they know how to handle people, but they're not true servants at heart. Jose, you are that person, and you showed me that, working together, being responsive, all the whole nine, and I am just so excited that you have this, um, well, you are already in the position, so, you know, it's just, we're making it official, and I'm finally, as, um, Nick Spaz, uh, Alderman Spazado said, um, that we've done that. I remember when I was running for Alderman, and I was interviewing, and the person said, well, I thought you were already, um, somebody. Well, I thought, we already thought you were the man, because you, 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 the title don't make you, you make it. And so I appreciate you so much in everything that you do, and again, another person that just loves Chicago. I love people that love this city, and will go through the alleys, the streets, to make sure that not only this street, this, um, city is safe, but also that it is well-served. I appreciate you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you as you take my calls in the middle of the night, as you always have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now you know who it's coming from, Mrs., all right. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this appointment, and I'd like to commend you, again, Mr. Mayor, on another great appointment. Um, this is a no-brainer, uh, is well-deserved, you know, and, and only reason why a lot of us calling you Jose, because we don't want to mess up your last name, so, but, um, but, you know, this, this brother here, uh, Mr. Mayor, not only he look at things, he can see things on a micro level, he can see them on a macro level, too, because he know the neighborhoods, he know the city, he knows how things work in this city, and he can get things done. I just wanted to say, I appreciate you, because, you know, I live right in the shadows of, of the nine-one-one center, so I appreciate everything you do to protect our city and make things go in our city. Uh, like I said, this is a no-brainer, you've been the right-hand man all the time, and it's well-deserved, congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this appointment? Hearing none, there is a motion that is on the floor, the movement to the passage, to the same roll call applied to item number one, Finance Report, of course, associated with the unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Just for, if you keep in score, Alderwoman Taylor, he also is a Cubs fan, so hearing no objections, to one Cubs fan, to another, so ordered. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Yancey, does that complete your report?
Yes, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Go Cubs, go. The next Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Page two, item one, is an appointment of Tom Carney as Commissioner of the Chicago Department of Transportation. Pause at this time to allow anyone who wishes to speak on this, uh, item.
Very good, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on this appointment. Um, Tom, Tom, you're Chicago, and, uh, your journey to get to this point really validates your commitment to our city. You could have easily walked away, um, after the last administration and being the acting, but you didn't. Could have went to the private sector, your expertise, uh, your knowledge for transportation is second to none, but you stayed here because you love, you love the city of Chicago. Whether you're, you've been the first deputy, the acting commissioner, now the commissioner, your commitment to the city, your commitment to excellence, your commitment to this body has been second to none, and that's a testament to who you are, where you come from, the, the, the parents that you have, um, the work ethic that they've instilled in you. So today, Tom, congratulations, thank you for the work that you have done, but more importantly, thank you for the work that you will do. Congrats.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rodriguez, do you wish to be recognized?
Yeah, very quickly, just, I, excellent appointment, um, Tom Carney, I, I, I think you are Chicago, my friend. Um, I'm very proud that we have someone who understands the importance that transportation, uh, is upon our great city, um, and he knows every nook and cranny of this, of this city. I've, I've, I've talked to you about sewer caps that need to get replaced, and he's like, oh, yeah, I remember that, uh, the crack across the street from there that we had to fix, uh, three, four, or five years ago. So, you know, I think that's the type of leader we need here. Look, we've got major challenges when it comes to transportation. Uh, we need to slow people down in this city, uh, our bike riders and pedestrians need to be prior, prioritized, uh, we need a bike grid now, uh, but the fact is, I think you get those things, you're going to surround yourself with a, with a number of people who are going to help make a lot of this happen, and at your core, I think you understand how to make these things happen, so very good appointment, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I too rise in support of this, uh, appointment, Commissioner, absolutely awesome. Um, you know, Mr. President, you got, uh, an individual in this position that is probably far probably one of the straightest shooters, uh, working in any department in the city of Chicago. He doesn't, doesn't lead you one way or the other, lays out the facts, helps you figure out the best way to get things done, and if he can't get it done, at that point in time, he looks towards the future of how you can get it done. Uh, this is an absolutely amazing appointment, I wholeheartedly support it, this is a great individual, besides just, you know, the point we always bring up, lead Chicago, that's it right there, so terrific appointment, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to lend my voice to this appointment. You know, that smile over there says it all, ladies and gentlemen, all you have to do is look over and
is look over and see how happy he is to finally get confirmed here in this, in this body. Uh, great choice, uh, you know, Tom, you're one of the best straight shooters and one of the most fair people when it comes to distributing resources throughout this city, and so I know you're gonna continue to do that with integrity and not be influenced, um, you know, by, you know, outside forces that are trying to get a little extra, uh, so, but thank you so much for doing what you do, and, uh, we support you wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cubs are socks. No, I just, don't start, we, a lot of people getting sock stuff for their, for their birthday. Tom, I have appreciated you in this space, and I'm honored that they've chosen you to be here. I remember complaining to you about the ugly new bike lanes or stuff that y'all painted on the ground, and you said, "Well, it's ugly, but it's, it's for safety," and I've appreciated that. Um, so deserving of having this space, um, and I thank you for being there. Sorry you got overlooked, that's, that's, that was on us, and we, we took a hit for it, and so we have the opportunity to make it right, and I'm just glad we have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
I thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, first of all, say thank you to Tom for always answering the phone and just stepping in in some ninth-hour situations. Uh, one of the memories that will always rest on my heart was after calling you to ask if there were any black contractors that could work on a project on 83rd, you assured that, and the kids were actually playing in the dirt and happy to see people that look like them work in a community like them, and so thank you for always making sure that we look good, and thank you for always answering the phone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm beginning to wonder, you just want me to say gee, okay, so we're gonna recognize Alderman Derek G. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, you are batting a thousand, because as we talked about over nine months ago in the office, I said the most important thing to the city of Chicago is delivering services, and, and, uh, and you agree, and I thank you so much, and I, and I have to say this because I know that I run, uh, uh, the commission, this blood pressure up, so I gotta get up and say something great about him, I know I do. I, I talked, and he's a, a Sox fan, uh, Alderman Taylor. Uh, so this was a great appointment, uh, this is exactly what we need to, to continue, even though we don't have enough money right now, but he is in the right place now to help us make the right decisions to get some of these streets and money funded to Department of Transportation to get these streets done in all communities. So I really, really thank you for this appointment, he understands city services, great job, glad you finally made it to the top spot, don't leave us, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I, I always believe that any administration should get to choose, um, their own team, um, and so that's why I'm so excited you made this choice, because already at Tom, if it's not him, I'm voting no, and I keep my word, and I thank you so much for selecting him, because again, not only from within, but for somebody who's doing the job, someone that loves this city, and someone that's helping and keeping the Alderman, um, informed. We represent the residents, they are constantly coming to us, and if we're not kept informed, we cannot be effective for them. Commissioner, you are that person that does that, and I thank you so much for it, because it just take another load off of us when we know what's coming down the pike, what's not, what we gotta deal with, so we can effectively communicate, uh, with our constituents. And I just wanna say, that beautiful daughter of yours, she is just so happy, she looked just like you, man, and, uh, she got that beautiful smile, and, uh, she is just so proud to be sitting here with her dad, uh, to hear these people say these great things about you, and trust me, they are not lying, because before I lie, I sit up and shut my mouth, and so I appreciate, I appreciate, um, what you have done and what you're gonna continue to do for this city. Thank you, uh, Mr. President, for making this great choice.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this nomination, it's great to see you in that box today, Tom, with your, your whole family, and like all of my colleagues said, I, I thank you for taking, uh, my calls, all of our calls at all hours of the day, and thank you for helping us make some of the most impossible asks possible, um, it's usually through collaboration and, and hard work from you and your team, so thank you, and, uh, Mr. President, thank you for this fantastic nomination.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this appointment and wanna commend you again, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is another no-brainer, um, you know, Tom is our go-to guy, uh, Tom has worked, I think, under three or four commissioners, uh, he's always been in the background, he's been the guy to get things done, um, you know, thank God we still have him, we appreciate him, and, uh, this is a great appointment, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Mr. President, I too support this nomination, or appointment, I should say, uh, Tom, as number two, I always bothered you, or at least I felt I did, now that you're number one, you won't have me bothering you anymore, 'cause I'll be bothering you number two now, so, but, uh, great appointment, Mr. President, Tom's got a wealth of knowledge, and he's just a fair and honest guy as you could be, and hard-working, so just can't be happier for him and us, so congratulations, Tom, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment, and, um, Tom, I just rise because I wanna congratulate you. Um, I can't think of a time when you haven't returned a call, um, so I certainly appreciate your responsiveness, and, and I hope that continues, uh, but thank you and, and congratulate you, and, um, I've had to rely on, you know, your office a, a lot, and, um, the constructive criticism or the constructive advice that you've given, um, has always been welcomed, uh, and so I thank you and I congratulate you on this day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also stand to support this, uh, nomination. Um, Tom, a lot of work to do, uh, we're in, I think, the third or fourth year of a Capitol bill, and looking forward to finding another funding mechanism in order to continue these investments in our communities, uh, especially around the bread and butter issues that impact Alderman on a daily basis, whether it's sidewalks, alleys, curbs, the non-sexy infrastructure improvements that need to get done on a daily basis. Uh, I do wanna echo, uh, one of my, uh, colleagues from the 6th Ward around, around the participation. Uh, I wanna make sure and challenge your department around, uh, getting men or protege programs in place, exposing minority and women-owned firms to prime opportunities, and so looking forward to working with you and your team, uh, as we, uh, continue to invest in this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise, um, in support of this appointment. Tom, I've known you for a short time, but in that short time, um, I, I know one thing to be true, you have a great love for this city, um, the way you show up every single day, um, working many hours into the night, I know, because I've gotten those calls at 9:30 at night, um, so to your daughter, and I have teenage, uh, I have teenage boys myself, um, we don't do this, well, we're, we're gluttons for punishment, let's be real about this, um, we don't do this just because it's a job, it's a career, and it's a, it's a lifelong passion, your, your dad's got his fingerprints all over this city, um, and for improving it. Um, I do want to echo the sentiments of something someone else said earlier, just about, um, how you, how you view, um, infrastructure work in the city, and how you view it with a, a lens for equity, you and the team that you lead, the amazing team that you lead, one of my favorite guys right behind you there, uh, Mr. Owens, but, um, we were talking about lights in Chinatown, it's a really big concern for us along Wentworth Avenue that are the old phosphorus lights, um, and we, we don't have all of the neon signs we once did in Chinatown to light up the street, and I've talked to you about, um, the concerns about how dark it is from a public safety perspective, um, and I, I said to you, I was willing to take it out of my menu, and you said, "Actually, you know, we should've finished that job," and you found a way to do it, so I thank you for that, um, and the people of the 11th Ward, thank you for that as well, um, so I wish you well in all of your future endeavors, and I look forward to partnering with you, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Uh, for many years, Tom Carney has been the, the person in CDOT that many of us lean on, no matter who the, the commissioner was, and, uh, in that time, always appreciate your communication, uh, your hard work, and your, your attention to detail, how special it is that your mom and dad could be here today for this day, and your beautiful daughter, um, you should all be so proud.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, um, and support this, uh, nomination. Tom, this is, uh, so deserving, I'm glad to see you in this position, you know, clearly you know the department like the back of your hand, uh, and I appreciate the counsel on difficult decisions we have to make regarding infrastructure in our communities, um, you're always available, you are someone that can get to the bottom of an issue very quickly, and I look forward to working with you, congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution, uh, Mr. and Mr. Mr. and Mrs. Carney should be very proud, you raised a good man, thank you for doing that. Um, uh, sense of humor is a little dry at times, but when you need knowledge and when you need professionalism, uh, Tom, you are the definition of professionalism. You know the ins and the outs of the city, and it is extremely, uh, important, as you can hear from all of my colleagues here today, um, you should be very proud of the service that you have given the city. Uh, anytime you have Alderman Quinn getting up and standing and singing your praises, you know you've done a good job, so, um, Marty, nobody said it better than Marty, Marty, so, you, thank you again for all the service that you have done for this city and, uh, for the work that you're about to do. As a matter of fact, many of us in here probably already think of you as the Commissioner as it is, so with all the work you have done, so thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support for this appointment, congratulations, Commissioner Carney, I wanna say that you have been outstanding, returning my calls, my text message, understanding the needs of my residents in the 30th Ward, um, but more importantly, open to feedback, I think we had some conversations on the things that we would like to see to change, and you have been open to that, so I thank you for taking the time to listen to those concerns, comment out to the ward, get to see those projects that, again, needed improvement. For that, I, you know, a lot of respects to you, to your team, they have been great, always reaching out to all of us, and again, you just answer my calls at any time during the day, and then at times late hours, but I'm excited to continue this partnership and the things that we can change and how we can be better, um, but again, I'm excited, and, um, congratulations one more time, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to commend you for another amazing appointment, um, Tom. We, we talked a bit at committee, um, I think we've seen examples of, uh, different departments where there's a struggle and a challenge between having the vision of where we wanna lead our city to, and actually getting it done, and getting the work done, and delivering the services our constituents are asking for, and I think something that I've seen from you since day one that I've been in this council is your ability to execute and to lead, uh, what I believe is probably one of the best teams in government, the amount of stuff that you all have to handle, whether it's construction, potholes to public transportation, all the things that, that our constituents come to us 'cause they wanna see improvement, right? You gotta, you gotta deal with the hard part of like, the neighbors wanna see the streets get fixed, but they don't actually wanna see the streets get fixed, they want them finished, and all the construction work that has to get done, you have to shepherd that and deal with all of our personalities as we're calling you, because our constituents calling about every complaint as well, and so, um, I, I, the Carney family, you should be incredibly proud of, of your son and your dad for the work that they do. Um, I'm a huge proponent, and I think my experience in, in life and work has always been that people do the work before they get the name tag, they do the work and they get it done, and so when they are given the title, they're already into that role, they're already handling the functions, you exemplify that, and so I look forward to working with you, um, not only to get more of the potholes filled, um, but also to make sure that when we think about CTA, about like a bus rapid transit on Western Avenue, when we talk about all the different components that encompass what we think of as transportation in our city, that we are that global city and are executing because of your leadership, so really, really glad of, uh, seeing this appointment, um, really glad that we can just call you Commissioner Carney going forward, and thank you again, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you. I know a lot of people have talked, but I just, uh, Commissioner, just wanna say that, uh, job well done, I am so excited about you sitting in that seat, uh, thank you, more than anything, you put in capital letters the ability to return a phone call, and you are great at it, and then you're great at completing that task after you get the call, so appreciate you, and I am delighted that you will be the number one in transportation.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Carney, very proud to see your appointment today, particularly for everything that it means for Chicago. CDOT is a strange and wide-ranging department, it is everything that we know that it is, and so much more than that, and to have someone with the comprehensive knowledge of that is great, to have someone who's such a consistent collaborator is really fantastic, because you're not just on the phone, you're on the street, you're on the sidewalk, you come out, see things in person, and you don't stop working at a problem until it's fixed, and that matters to me, because at the end of the day, transportation is all the ways that we get around, on our feet, on two wheels, three wheels, four wheels, whatever that looks like, and on any given year, over the last 10 years, at least 100 Chicagoans didn't come home at the end of the day, and I, I know this because I've stood next to their parents at press conferences, and I've carried their kids' backpacks into these chambers, and I have an 18-month-old daughter, and I refuse to ever carry her backpack in here without her, and so this is the work, and as I said, I know you don't stop working at a problem until it's fixed, and I believe that at the end of your tenure, and I hope that's not for a very long time, that number is at zero, and so I'm glad for the work and the collaboration, and for the future we're gonna build together. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I too rise in support of this, uh, appointment, uh, first off, uh, you've been around, you know the, know the ropes, you know everything, it's good to have that level of continuity, uh, understanding the needs locally as well as the needs globally, I think is a, uh, good perspective and thing that you add to this, uh, to the department as well. One thing I will say, unlike Alderman Vasquez, uh, I don't want my potholes filled, I want new streets, so you worked that in the program, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, um, Chairman Mitchell, that is all that we have on your motion.
Uh, be- be- before I move passes of this item, I would like to say a couple of things. Uh, Tom, your 28 years have undoubtedly prepared you for this top spot, I echo the sentiments of what Chairman Irvin just said, you recognize things locally as well as globally, we've had several, several conversations from operational lens about things, and I look forward to continuing those conversations and, and, and actually moving and taking CDOT to another level. Um, again, your resume, you, this is your spot, for the last three terms, you have been the number two, you're number one now, and with that, I, I challenge you, I challenge you to take this department to another level, there's things that you and I have talked about that I'm gonna be right there with you to try to, 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 to improve them, all right? So with that said, congratulations, you deserve it, and if there's no other objections, I move passes of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered. Congratulations, Tom.[1742.83] Congratulations, Tom.
Pages three through seven includes 44 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, three, eight, 12, 14, 19, 25, 26, 27, 29, 30, 32, 33, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 45, 47, and 49. Page eight includes items, ordinance 2024-0007799, a transportation ordinance for a property located in the 27th Ward. Page eight includes items, ordinance 2024-0007869, a transportation ordinance for a property located in the 28th Ward. Page nine includes items, ordinance 2024-0007700, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the third ward. Page 10 includes items, substitute ordinance 2025-0007732, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the fourth ward. At this time, I would like the record to reflect Alderman Ray Lopez's request to be recorded as a no vote on item 12 on page three. If there are no other objections, I move passes of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections despite the one no vote on the one item, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For our Committee on Workforce Development, Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on March 14th, 2024. There was one item on the agenda, A 2024-0007309, the appointment of Sandra Blakemore as Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources. The Committee voted unanimously to confirm Sandra Blakemore as the new Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources. Unless there is any objection, I move for the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance to be applied to this report.
Just for the report? Just for the report, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Just for the report, right? The Rule 45 or was it?
No, this is actually the appointment, sir.
This for the appointment, okay, all right.
Let's go back and allow some of my colleagues.
That's right, yeah, let's do that. So I have two items there, I just don't know if you were speaking to both or just the one. My apologies for that. Are there any other individuals which to speak to this appointment? Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you. Reverend Evans once told me, "You can say a whole lot and not say nothing, and say a little and say a whole lot." Qualified. Thank you.
Yeah, so now who's going to speak behind that? All right, somebody try that. Yeah, it's like somebody, are there any others? That's, okay. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor. You got to quote somebody, though.
I am. The question is always, and I, I think I can speak for the majority of my coworkers, and this definitely is in respect to one of our favorite constituents, which you were asked, were you kin, some kin to Mr. George Blakemore? That is always a question people ask. And so I just want to say thank you for taking the time out to kind of explain to us what your role is, because a lot of us newbies didn't know. I've appreciated the conversation, and I appreciate your will to want to work and create real change in this department, because we know that we need employees, we need people who support and work for the city, and the thought that you coming in, ten toes down, as young people would say, I appreciate that, and so I'm grateful for this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Are there any other orders? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was talking to my colleagues. We're on Commissioner Sandra Blakemore, are we?
Yes, we are.
And so I want to stand up and say that this is a stellar appointment, Mr. President. I've known Sandra for some time now, and she has over 20 years of management experience. And what I like about Sandra is that she is somebody who pays attention to detail and will look at what systems might be old and antiquated and try to figure out new ways of doing things. She's very creative, and so I think that that bodes well for the Human Resources Department. And she's also one of my sorors. She is a member of Delta Sigma Theta, and actually, we're line sisters. And I'm so happy to see you in this position, Sandra, and look forward to working with you and wish you nothing but the best in your new role.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Emma Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too rise in support of this resolution, this great appointment, rather. When Sandra called me, I don't know, I didn't know her, but I felt like I did because of the conversation that we had, and I went right into the business of the office. And what was really outstanding was she was willing to be able to come out, come out to the community, the taxpayers, hear and learn what they have to say, and not be a department that's closed off, where people's need jobs, don't know how to navigate the jobs, when they're coming up. Let's be more open and more transparent in that department, because as the, this aging body moves, get older, move out, we need to open doors for the younger generation to be able to come in, and we need to have a system that one should be able to navigate instead of waiting. I've been on this waiting list 10 years, nobody never called me. That type of thing should not be happening, and she agrees with me. So we want to work along together and try to make it a little bit more transparent for the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this appointment. Sandra, I'm disappointed to see your brother's not here today. He was here earlier, so I'm sorry he didn't stick around. But Sandra, once again, the same thing I said at the committee meeting, count on us to help you. The best way for you to do your job is to count on us to be a conduit out there with the residents of the city and hopefully the city. You know, I'm not concerned about the guy from the suburbs or out of state, once again, but I look forward to working with you. You have an awesome number two. I don't know much about your staff that you, you have there, but I certainly know your, your first deputy is an awesome gal, and she's a wealth of knowledge, and I look forward to working with you and helping you and look forward to meeting with you again. So, congratulations, Sandra, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Mr. President, this is an outstanding appointment. I have to shout out to our COO for truly helping the administration, and the appointments have just been outstanding on your leadership. Thank you to Commissioner Blakemore for, I think I contacted you within your first week or two as your interim role with the Chicago Automatic Black Caucus. We had over 1,000 registrants and about 800 attended our inaugural Black Caucus citywide job fair hiring event, and it was because of you and your leadership and really helping us identify where the vacancies were for entry-level positions. Your due diligence, your quick research, you were just on the spot. So I look forward, on behalf of the Automatic Black Caucus, with working with you and in your office and continuing to figure out the antiquated ways of what DHR has, and I know you're the right woman for the job. And finally, we have another Delta to join Chairman Pat Dow, so welcome, my Greek sister.
Thank you. Before we pass it back to the Chair, are there any other orders that wish to speak to this appointment? I see in other hands, the Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
I renew my motion to pass this appointment via the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance.
Very good. Hearing no objections. Congratulations, so ordered. For being patient, Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
That concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce.
Thank you, sir. For the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Buildings, Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on March 14th, 2024. These reports are grouped for convenience. Following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number O 2024-0007733, the Amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 17-0403-F, by requiring special use approval for sports and recreation permits in specific use categories in a PMD 4A located in the 27th Ward. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the unsuccessful, excuse me, the un, the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the historical landmark designation for the Phoebe and John Gray House located at 4362 West Grace Street in the 30th Ward. I move passage of these items, this items by the same motion if there is no objection.
No objections, hearing none, so ordered.
Pages one through seven contain various map amendments in the first, 11th, 13th, 21st, 24th, 25th, 28th, 33rd, 35th, 39th, 40th, 43rd, and 47th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page seven contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, in the second, 28th, 29th, 32nd, and 33rd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. For Joint Committee Health and Human Relations and Workforce Development, Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations and Workforce Development, which held a meeting on February 27th. There was one item on the agenda, O 2024-0007340, an amendment of the Municipal Code Title Two, adding new sections, 2-50-045 and 2-112-205, regarding definitions and terms of health and social services contracts with the city of Chicago. The Committee voted to accept a substitute ordinance, SO 2024-0007340, which was passed by unanimous vote of those members present. Unless there's an objection, I move for the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance to be applied to this report.
Hearing none, so ordered.
This concludes the report of the Joint Committee on Health and Human Relations and Workforce Development.
Thank you very much. Matters on the agreed-upon calendar, Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I have received from the Clerk Andrea Invalencia a total of 152 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tripulatory resolutions for the following alderpersons. Alderperson Laspada, Alderperson Hopkins, Alderperson Yancy, Alderperson Hall, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Lee, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Coleman, Alderperson Fuentes, Alderperson Waggett's Pack, Alderperson Metz, Alderperson Lawson, and Alderperson Gardner. I move these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business. And the clerk would do this beginning with the first ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed orders for designation of 2,000 through 2294 North Milwaukee Avenue as a low affordability community, which is referred to the Committee on Housing. Alderman Laspada and Alderman Martin have proposed resolution to call for hearings on lowering citywide default speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles per hour, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Robinson has proposed orders for amendment to a vacation of the area bounded by East 26th Street, South Lake Park Avenue, East 31st Street, and South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to authorize release of utility easements benefiting Peoples Gas, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Robinson also has proposed orders directing the Commission of Transportation to rename Columbus Drive from East Grand Avenue to South John Baptiste Point du Sabo Lakeshore Drive to Barack Obama Drive, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Yancy has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Coleman Brothers Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Yancy also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 5700 South Du Sabo Lakeshore Drive, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hall has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Keith O. Tate Memorial Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hall also has proposed orders for a street designation as Honorary Roland W. Burris Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And a proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Honorary Lem's Barbecue House Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Mitchell has proposed orders for dedication of the public way by widening South Camden Avenue between East 92nd Street and South, and East 92nd Place, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lee has proposed orders for vacation of an alley bounded by South Canal Street, West Sirmac Road, and South Grove Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Ramirez has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-172, by deleting its entirety and adding a new Chapter 2-172 entitled Codifying Transition Haven Removals, which establishes prohibition on length-of-stay limitations for transitional shelters operated by the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Curtis has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Officer James Jimbo Sfeck, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Mosley has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of South Halston Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Scott has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Honorary Pastor Jimmy, Jimmy Earl Story Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Secha Lopez has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as David Boogie Gonzalez Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Fuentes has proposed resolution for expression of support for, for right to self-determination for people of Puerto Rico and Opposition to Puerto Rico Status Act, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for vacation and dedication of public ways bounded by West North Avenue, North Elston Avenue, West Lemoine Street, and North Noble Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burnett also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 800 North Kedzie Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Harry J Fishman Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Telefiero has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at fifty-five fifty West Madison Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telefiero also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Samuel Julian Lay Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-nine forty-nine West Irving Park Road, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Conway has proposed ordinance for vacation of public alleys in the area bounded by West Lake Street, North Clinton Street, West Randolph Street, and North Jefferson Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Conway also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West, of North Wabash Avenue and East Madison Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Conway also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Title seventeen, modifying various sections regarding permitting specifications and location restrictions for cannabis business establishments, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Ramirez Rosé has proposed order for issuance of permit of a signed signboard at twenty-eight fifty-nine North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Villegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter four dash sixty, by modifying Section four dash sixty dash zero ten and Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-one, requiring incidental activity liquor licenses for retail clothing stores serving alcohol to patrons for consumption on the premises, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Villegas and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash sixty-eight, by adding a new section, two dash sixty-eight dash zero fifty, requiring city data to be processed, stored, transmitted, and disposed of within the jurisdiction of the United States, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Villegas and Alderman Burnett have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash ninety-two, by modifying Sections two dash ninety-two dash zero seventy and two dash ninety-two dash zero ninety, and by adding a new section, two dash ninety-two dash one hundred, establishing annual audit of all contracts subject to city certification eligibility business participation programs, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderman Metz has proposed resolution for expression of support for MWDBE programs and the call on the U.S. Congress to protect, United, the U.S. Department of Transportation's DBE program, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderman Nugent has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the thirty-ninth Ward Wage Allowance Expense Account for year twenty twenty-four, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed resolution to call for hearings, uh, by relevant city departments to explore barriers to housing for immigrants and refugee communities in Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for the Department of Family and Sports Services to provide city council daily reports of total new arrivals to be evicted from shelters operated by the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Vasquez and Alderman Taylor have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section two dash eight dash zero ninety, by requiring Committee on Education and Child Development to hold quarterly hearings regarding operation and performance of the Chicago Public Schools, which is referred to the Committee on Education and Child Development. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed order, ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash one seventy-two, by deleting its entirety and adding a new Chapter two dash one seventy-two entitled Prevent Shelter Evictions, which establishes prohibition on length of stay limitations for transitional shelters operated by the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash one seventy-two, by deleting in its entirety and adding a new Chapter two dash one seventy-two entitled Transitional Haven Guidelines, which is, which establishes prohibition on the length of stay limitations for transitional shelters operated by the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Lopolitano has proposed order, has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter nine dash one ten, by modifying Sections nine dash one ten dash zero ninety and nine dash one ten dash one ninety regarding petty cab license decal requirements and violation penalties, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter ten dash twenty-eight, by modifying various sections and by deleting Section ten dash twenty-eight dash seven eighty-one regarding ending of multiple news track program, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Knutson has proposed ordinance for a street designation as Richard Hunt Place, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Lawson has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section seventeen dash thirteen dash one thousand, regarding permanent application approvals and exemption for conversion of certain buildings from commercial to residential, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lawson also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen dash twelve, by adding a new section, seventeen dash twelve dash eleven oh five, establishing boundaries and regulations for signs within Wrigley, Wrigley Field adjacent sign district, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Gardner has proposed ordinance for approval of a plat of the Milwaukee at Austin Resubdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Martin has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at forty-ten Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Manaha Happenworth has proposed ordinance, has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Manaha Happenworth also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, and a, and proposed orders, and a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Brenmore Avenue and West Foster Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Manaha Happenworth also has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter two dash one seventy-two, by deleting in its entirety and adding a new Chapter two dash one seventy-two entitled Clarifying Haven Time Limits, which establishes prohibition on length of stay limitations for transitional shelters operated by the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Aldermatic introductions.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell, for the approval of journals.
Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from the February fifteen, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I am aware of one item of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Dow and calls for a vote on ordinance two zero two three zero 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 four four zero six, which was deferred and published on October fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Alderman Dow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule forty-one notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on O two, O two three zero 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 four four oh six, which is an ordinance concerning a redevelopment agreement with E.G. Wood L. Three C, providing tax increment financing funds for the renovation and lease of spaces to be service providers at ten twenty-two West Sixty-Third Street in the sixteenth ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered. Thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
I am aware of no other pieces of unfinished business.
Very well, thank you very much. For miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
And for the date and time for the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up the ordinance to the clerk, setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, Section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at ten a.m. in the Council Chamber on second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, Seventh Ward.
Thank you very much, Alderman Mitchell. It's been moved for passage in the omnibus, hearing no objections, so ordered. For the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.